I would like to call the meeting to order for the June 26 City Council meeting at 6:30 PM. Could I get the clerk to read the preamble?
Thank you. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the state of Illinois and the ordinances of the city of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council meeting of the mayor and the City Council of the city of Prospect Heights is being held Monday, June 26, 2023, at 6:30 PM, in person in the council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmhurst Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois. Mayor Patrick Lovigson presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and Estown RCN Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and Estown RCN Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items will be provided an opportunity during the meeting. There will be a five-minute time limit for speakers.
Okay. Can the clerk take the roll?
Good evening. Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Anderson? No, she's not here. Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Thank you. Alderman Anderson is out with previous notification. With that, we'll please rise to the stand, please.
Pledge of limitations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes. I'm looking for somebody to make a motion to approve the June 12, 2023 City Council regular meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
I abstain.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item four, presentations. We have Scott Britton from Cook County. Our Cook County Commissioner is here, and he has with him the Cook County United Against Hate Resolution. If you'd like to stand up and just tell us a little bit about it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before I discuss this resolution, and thank you for considering it, I do think I have to take a quick moment to just say, you know, it's been a challenging four years in this job. I didn't really realize all the stuff that was going to be coming down the pike. But I can tell you that my partnership with the city of, not Arlington, Prospect Heights, has been incredibly beneficial, I think, to the district that I represent and to the people who live here. And I can tell you that, having been a trustee myself for 12 years, I know how these things work when you have a good village manager and you have an excellent one in Joe Wade. And everyone in his administration is a pleasure to work with, and I want to thank you for all of your partnership over the last four years, and you're stuck with me for another four. But the reason I'm here is to talk a little bit about Cook County United Against Hate. You know, it was, I can't believe it, it was over a year ago now that I got up one Sunday morning, and I went out to get my newspaper, and then I was going to head out to Mass after that, and there was a sandwich bag laying on my driveway filled with rice. I've now learned that there's rice in there to keep it from blowing away. And inside that bag, when I opened it up, I found these pieces of paper, which are the most vile, anti-Semitic things you could ever see. And I thought to myself, one, it's very strange having a neo-Nazi in your driveway, and two, I have to do something about this. This is not something that we should accept in the village of Glenview or the other towns, and there are many of them, that have received this information. And I'd like to also tell you that I wish this wasn't so topical, but just last week, I don't even know if everyone is aware of this, but we just had additional white supremacist materials dropped off in Elk Grove Village at a local jewel. And so, again, I wish it wasn't something that was so front of mind, but it is. And it is something that I feel like we've been able to, and it's been particularly gratifying for me, to show that we simply reject the concepts of hate based on who you are, how you worship, the color of your skin, who you love, all of those things which should not make any difference. And it is not a partisan issue, it is a moral issue. And a moral issue that I think we have now reunited behind in our faith communities, which have been wonderful in helping us with this. We now have eight municipalities in my district that have adopted this resolution, for which I thank this board also for doing tonight, and 30 community organizations. I'm meeting with the RSTIAS this next week to talk to them about doing a little bit more. And it is certainly something that establishes a goal, and you can see the information that we've compiled on our website, www.cookcountyunitedagainsthate.com, where we're trying to give educational pieces to multiple different places, schools, and facilities. But if, at the end of this process, there's one kid from Prospect Heights who says, that they're now comfortable walking down the halls of their high school wearing a Star of David necklace or a T-shirt that celebrates their African ancestry, or they wear a pride banner. I think if they feel like we have their back, that we support them, that's the purpose behind all of this. And so, I just want to thank you for considering at the end of the, and I won't read the entire resolution, but the final paragraph really summarizes, I think, what we're trying to say, which is that the city of Prospect Heights does hereby commit to fighting injustice and intolerance, and hereby joins with its community to welcome all people regardless of their race, religion, ethnicity, age, gender identity, sexual orientation, disability class, or other backgrounds. Because one thing I know, hate has no home in the city of Prospect Heights, in the county of Cook, or in our nation. And I thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'd look for a motion to approve the resolution, the Cook County United Against Hate resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do that with just a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll get to that part later. Okay, Chicago Executive Board, Mr. Seward.
Well, good evening, everyone, which includes mayor, council officials, and residents. Glad to be here tonight to update you on the CEA happenings. As many of you, you know, were able to come, some were able to come, some weren't, but we understand why. We hope you had a good time. We really appreciated all the help that was given by, you know, Bill, your department, and Mark, and public service, and everybody that lent a hand to make it a success. So with that, we had about 500 participants in the running and walking. That was in the morning, and then for the evening festivities with the rock and the fireworks. I don't know if Wheeling's drone could count the number of people, but it was a fair amount of people that were there, one of the bigger crowds. So again, thank you, and we hope that, you know, that both communities can really be served by having the fireworks and also the bands. So on the other side of it, I thought I'd give you the update on just what's happening, because there's a lot, really, that's going on at the airport. And recently, on June 13, we had a public meeting for the, they called it the noise exposure map. The FAA makes us do the contours and evaluate, you know, how the noise is, if it's shifting. So they're just about done with that, and then we have public comments. So then the comments are given to the FAA, and then within a certain amount of time, they'll, no doubt, approve the map. So that was happening on the 13th. There's about 20 of people were in attendance to it. Getting back, kind of on the same note, the RCP, which is the Regional, or the Residential Sound Improvement Program, which the FAA and we fund, there was, we'll be rebidding the Phase One contract soon. So that'll start initially, we had the pilot, and now we're having, rolling out where we're actually doing groups of houses on a regular basis. So that'll be continuing. And we've also got work out there. There's all kinds of work going out there. There's, all of our infrastructure, electrical infrastructure for the lights and the lighting of the taxiways and the runways. It's about 60 years old. So in conjunction with the FAA, we're totally renovating everything, putting new conduit, new wires in. So total upgrade there. We've got a roadway improvement project over in the area of Atlantic, which is a mill and overlay, and we'll also be doing construction on the east ramp expansion, and that'll like join two ramps right now that have a green space in between it. So, you know, you probably see a lot of trucks out there. Some interesting stuff, too, is we have five airport interns for the summer, and they're from all aviation universities like North Dakota, Purdue, Lewis, Southern, and Western Michigan. And it's nice to see this, because some of our interns, now that have been there a couple of years, they're going and getting full-time jobs at other airports. So, you know, we're starting to be like a feeder for the aviation industry. So one of the guys that graduated is going to Fort Wayne. He actually started with the D4, District 214 Aviation Partnership that we have on the airfield where the high school kids come in. So he's actually somebody from the area that's now benefiting from it. So it's good to hear and see. And something else that's pretty cool is the airport's going to be 100 years old next, I think it's next year. So Mike Haupt, which is an author, local author, he does all kinds of research on all the airfields that were around here. But since it's our 100-year anniversary, we're partnering with him, and he's going to write a book about Palwaki CEA. So we're excited about that. And then I thought I'd give him a plug, too, because the library district, Prospect Heights Library District, has him on a presentation schedule for July 10 at 1:00 PM, which is either library or Zoom. And if you're, the program's called Chicago: Shaping the Airline Industry, and there'll be clips about CEA in there, too. But that's, like I said, July 10 at 1:00 PM. Registration's on the PHPL website. And then finally, for you, we'll be in the parade with our hand-cranked propeller aircraft. And with any luck, the 55 Willys Military Jeep will be dragging, be dragging along, too. So that should wrap things up from my side. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you very much. It was a great event. It was really good. Everybody liked it. It was crowded. Can't say enough about it.
Good. And that brings the, you know, the community closer to the airport than just looking through the fences. And they can really get an understanding of, you know, the vastness of what's going on on that property and...
How big it is. I think when you're standing there and you're on a runway and you're looking around, how big the airport is, you know. You drive by it, you're going fast down Palatine Road, you just see it as you go by. But standing out there, you really get an idea of the size of it.
Yep. And then with the walk-and-run portion of it, it gets people actually out on the runways. And it's, when can you do that? Unless you have to deplane for an emergency, right? So, thank you, Pat. And again, thank you all for helping out and just making it a success. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have no appointments or confirmations or proclamations. We moved item six, public comment. Anybody looking to speak? Yes?
We have Joe Sykes, if I'm saying that correctly. He would like to speak. Come on. It's a non-agenda.
Okay, so it's non-agenda? Okay.
Right. It's marked as a yes, so, okay.
Anybody else here to speak about something that is on the agenda? No? Okay. Oh, yeah, it's on the agenda. On the new business. Yes, Lily's, right? Yep. Yep, it's on there. Well, you'll have a chance to speak when that comes up, if you wish to. Okay. Okay, item seven is the consent agenda. I can go through these all unless, I'll read them all out loud. But unless somebody has a request to remove something, if you'd like to do that, could you let me know now? Okay. So the consent agenda consists of item A, which is a business request and ordinance increasing the number of C3 liquor licenses for Wingstop, which is a second reading. Do we need to do those individually? Liquor licenses? No. Okay. Item B is the staff memo and ordinance amending the city code, Chapter Two, Article Two, Section Seven, the hotel operator's occupation tax. That is a second reading. C is the staff memo and resolution appointing solid waste agency director and alternate director. D is a resolution, staff memo, appointing the Northwest Community, or Northwest Municipal Conference delegate and alternate delegate. Item E is a resolution pledging the city of Prospect Heights to join the Cook County Unite Against Hate, which I think we already did. I jumped the gun on that.
Yeah, we did that.
It's all right. Well, he was here when we did it, so that's why we wanted to do that. Item F is a resolution authorizing a civil engineering services agreement with Gualt, Hamilton, and Associates for the design engineering services for the Alton Road stormwater improvements. So I'd look for a motion to approve items A through F as submitted.
Not including E, which was...
Yeah, we can remove A. A, B, C, D, and F. For motion to approve.
So move, Morgan Adams?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item eight, old business. We have none.
I'm sorry. I didn't know. I thought you said A, B, C, D, and F. Say E?
We'd already passed E. No, we did E.
Why, I had a question on that.
Oh, okay.
What does the, so this Cook County to unite against hate, what does it entail? Like what, we adopted it. What do we, what is it actually going to do?
It's just a support measure for it. There's nothing for us to do. It's just recognizing it, recognizing the organization and what they're doing.
Okay, so it's more like an educational thing that they're...
Right. It's just us showing them support.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So there's no, there's no action. So we have a first and a second for items A, B, C, D, and F already. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
All right. No old business, new business, requests and ordinance increasing the number of C1 liquor license for Lily's Taste, first reading. If you guys want to come up, if anybody has any questions, they can ask. But this is just the first reading. There's no action on this today. The next meeting is when it'll be voted on.
Yeah, we understand that. And we just want to say why we came to this stage. I say "we" because I'm the consultant and friend and admirer of this young couple that are really doing a beautiful job in my 40 years in the States. As a consultant, I think it's the ones that really deserve from me as much as I can. And I wrote something related with the reason why they are coming with this idea of having a table liquor license. Lily's Taste Team, respectfully, which is to express the reason why we are requesting a table liquor license, there is no intention to turn this place into a bar, far from it. Important and part of our culture is the gastronomy. We cannot avoid seasoning Aztec dishes without using ingredients from the ancestors that are directly related with the wide variety of chiles and spices that are harvested in our Mexican field. To accompany a good mole, good carnasada, good tacos, hot tacos, you need to get some beer or some wine. It's not something that they're going to have people over-drinking, because they know that, because it's a family place. So I saw them, since they started with the cart selling tamales on the street, now they have their own restaurant. I'm very proud of it. I'm from Chile, but I don't eat chili. That doesn't matter. Hey, you are from Chile, why don't you eat chili? Well, in Chile, if you go to Chile someday, don't ask for chili, because we call ají. It's a different expression. The same thing. Ají is in the language of the Incas, Quechua. And in Navajo, from the Aztecs, it's chili. Okay, so the reason is, the food needs it. And they think if with that ingredient, with the food, same food, good food, because I'm the witness of good food from them, the sales will increase, they will have more success, and more jobs, probably getting more people working there, and finally, more taxes for the village. Thank you for all you did before to get it open, especially Mr. Peterson. He, we, I agree about when that somebody says, this is a good village. I'm a realtor. I work in the entire state of Illinois, and I can say that this is a good, really good village, respectful with all the kind of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions or no? Okay. Now, we'll see you in two weeks.
Mayor Lovigson, I just want to add that their facility does meet all the requirements as listed in the liquor code for table seating and menu service.
Okay, thank you. And then we'll see you again in two, when's the meeting? The next, July?
10.
10th.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you don't have to stay for the rest.
Next time, we will bring some tamales.
Item B is a waiver request of the first reading for ordinance O2319, a staff memo and ordinance directing the sale of surplus property, the 2011 Ford Expedition. So this is a request to waive the first reading. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So we can bring the next one to the floor here, which is the ordinance O2319, staff memo and ordinance directing the sale of the surplus property, a 2011 Ford Expedition. This is the second reading to approve this ordinance and memo. I need a motion to approve.
So moved, Morgan Adams?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Staff, elected officials, and commission reports. So we have the May financial reports by Assistant Finance Director Bob Tannehill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I'd like to present the May financial report. We are into the first month of our fiscal year of '23-'24, representing 8% of the year so far. We have total revenues representing 6.08% of the budget. Total expenses reflect 2.79% of the budget. Our revenues are within expectations as our expenses are. Currently, right now, the finance department and the city, we're involved with the city's yearly audit, starting this month and next month. We're putting together all the work papers and documents for the outside auditors. So we're busy doing that, and some of the stuff on the financial report, you may see, may see some accruals that we're going to have to bring back into April and things like that, money coming in that comes into May. One nice thing is that we're really taking advantage of our interest rates. We're seeing a lot of high interest rates and high interest coming in into our accounts. So it's a good thing for us. So that's all I have for tonight. If you have any questions, try to answer them. If not, I can get you any information that you may need in the future.
All right. Any questions? No? Thank you. Let's go elected officials first on my left here. Anybody have any report they want to give?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I had told a few council members about this, but I want to let everyone know that Mike Putz, the director of the Greater Wheeling Area Chamber, has extended a hand to the city of Prospect Heights to assist in any way for the businesses that were affected by the fire in Elmhurst Road. So I understand they're still looking at the insurance prospects of it, but he stands ready to help in any way that we feel that they could possibly, you know, help us with. With that, too, the chamber had a ribbon cutting last week on Dundee Road. It's a credit union, self-reliance credit union, and they have, their branch, their first branch was open 75 years ago in Chicago. It's a Ukrainian credit union. So now they've branched out over here to Wheeling. They have some other smaller branches around. But just so all businesses know, credit unions are known to be very popular in opening, you know, business loans and mortgages. So just wanted to bring that up. And the networking events are always open to everyone. You know, if you're a small business owner, you don't have employees, but you have your own business running, small, big businesses, it doesn't matter. But we encourage everyone to visit, visit the website, come and visit, make calls to the executive director, Mike Putz, if you're interested in becoming a member. And you shall see that membership is really, really growing, and they're very popular now. It's a great feeling in our community. So we welcome everyone to come to our networking events. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on my left? On my right, any elected officials, reports?
I mean, I quickly, I heard the news this morning. Thank you for notifying us about John Taman, who I had the pleasure of serving on the planning and zoning board with. I would say John clearly had many years of service to our city, but I always respected John because he was always interested, willing to give his time, engaged, concerned about our community, and I really respected that. So he will certainly be missed.
Yes, he will. Anybody else? Okay. Yeah, let's go to staff. Anybody on the left down here?
Just, I want to make an announcement, Mayor. Thank you. Not only to the residents of Prospect Heights, but city staff, aldermen, we are having a Citizens Academy September 28 through November 28, 6:30 to 8:30 PM. It is really a unique experience. That's, we also draw our volunteers from that class. You get to see the inner workings of the police department from processing crime scenes, DUIs, a trip to our dispatch center, our SWAT truck comes by, lets you see what's, the tools that we use. If you ever get a SWAT call out, you'll probably meet most of our police department during that time. You really will sharpen your skills, just in general, while you're getting to look inside of our police department, see how we operate. I think it's a great experience for anyone. Just have to be 18. Call the police department, get an application, and we really look forward to this time of year. And again, if you've not gone through it... And again, if you've not gone through it, some of you up here have, I invite you to please participate. Thank you.
And that's, is that one day a week?
It's every Tuesday for eight weeks, or 10 weeks. Yes.
Tuesdays.
Starts September 28th, and there's a graduation ceremony on November 28th.
Thank you. Any staff on my right here? Dan?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I would like to give a quick update. Last week, we had the debilitating fire at the shopping center at Elmhurst and Hints Road. The cause has not been identified yet by the investigators, but it did cause all 12 businesses within the shopping center to be shut down for safety reasons, smoke damage. I've been in contact daily with the property owner. They have started the process of doing their insurance adjusters and investigators, letting the insurance investigator and adjusters with the businesses, started late on Friday afternoon, are continuing this week. The management company and ownership has been very, phased forward, working with them to try and get this thing moving as quickly as possible. The next step is a full electrical engineering investigation, and structural will come in with some plans. They're hoping to have a course of action plotted within the next two to three weeks. So I'll keep the council apprised. I do want to thank the Police Chief, Lieutenant Cerniak, who was on the lead person that day, Deputy Chief Durmond, and the rest of the PD for their support. Mark was out there with his guys and my staff out there doing the coordination of the, talking to all the owners, trying to do what we can. And we have communicated the offer of the Chamber to the ownership and the owners of the businesses. So, thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Mark, I think, had something to say about...
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Saturday, June 24th, in the morning, the Police Department got notified of a sinkhole on Old Willow Road near Wolf. That small little sinkhole ended up being a crater. It ended up about seven feet deep and about eight feet across. Luckily, we had no accidents, no injuries. The sinkhole was notified to the Police Department. We came out, met with the officers, barricaded it off, and determined it was a very unsafe condition we had on our roadway. The Police Department then assisted. We closed the road entirely, got ahold of IDOT, MWRD, Metropolitan Water Reclamation District, and Ares Construction, who does things on that side for IAW. And on a Saturday morning, everyone showed up. Within a few, three hours, we had all the agencies on the site. A few more hours trying to determine who owned the issue. Real good, working together. A lot of times, we talk about the agencies and we have trouble communicating. This was a Saturday morning. Everything went right. Everyone was able to get together, figure it out. Currently, or what occurred, was a sewer manhole had eroded away, and in turn, all the earth around it had flowed into the sewer pipe and left town, leaving a cavern similar to, you remember hearing about Kentucky or the Corvette Museum, where sinkholes formed by Mother Nature. This was formed by the flow of water or sewage underneath the earth. This determination that MWRD would resolve the problem by replacing and rebuilding a manhole was the final outcome of it. They came out and did work area protection, closed the road at our approval between Mendel and Wolf. Steel plates were installed over the hole. But because the amount of earth that's been eroded around there, it'd be unsafe to open it up for traffic because we're not sure how everything is outside of it. And within a few days, it can change dramatically. So there's an inconvenience for motorists in that area. They plan on starting doing some major work on it on Tuesday to Wednesday, and be done hopefully by Friday to reopen the road. There's a lot of work for them to do. But that's what's going on over there. We've had a lot of questions about why a road that seems good and with steel plates over, why we're not opening it for traffic. It's because it's the center of the road and it's unstable on each lane. So that's what's happening out there, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Will that be a permanent fix then by Friday or temporary?
It'll be a permanent fix.
Okay.
They have to, I'm sorry, they're gonna have to reroute some of the sewer at the time to do the repairs. It's a large-scale production to get it done. And they're getting all their resources lined up over Sunday, Monday, and hopefully getting started tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Joe?
Yes, unfortunately, the city didn't get a chance to thank Commissioner Britton while he was here. But just as an update, as the City Council is aware, he sponsored, represented the city on two significant sidewalk projects. It was the Cook County seed money that started the Wolf Road sidewalk. Since then, we've gotten funding from, I think, six different sources, or six sources all total. It's as much of a drainage improvement as a sidewalk improvement, too. I think Commissioner Britton probably was responsible for about $300,000 in funding seed money for that project, which then enabled us to get the prerequisite engineering completed so that we could leverage other grants. And similarly, he's done the same thing, representing the city for the Wolf, or the Camp McDonald sidewalk by the preliminary engineering, design engineering work, which once that's completed, now we can make application for others. So it's unfortunately left early, but I just wanted to underscore that point. He's, two major sidewalk projects, we probably would not have been able to do on our own without getting the seed money, which then enables us to capture other grant money. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think it's important to point out that any major projects we do, staff is out there trying to get multipliers on the money that we have. You know, we might do a project that's worth $2 million, but it starts out with us finding a couple hundred thousand dollars to do the engineering and then going out and getting grants or direct funding from other government agencies. So it's always nice to see those agencies, especially so far the county has really been helping us a lot. He's, Britton has been really...
He's been incredibly helpful to us.
Yes, yes. Very good. Okay, anything from City Attorney? Nope? All right, then we'll move on to the approval of the warrants.
The total for the expenditures was $358,115.78. We had a wire payment on June 16th. The 2023 payroll then amounted to $181,332.88, bringing the total, oh, I'm sorry. And the May Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund payment was $15,281.14, bringing the total warrant amount to $554,729.80 for tonight's council's approval.
Okay, with that, I would need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved. Item 12, public comment on non-agenda matters.
Yes, Joe, if you can please approach.
Over here, yes. So it's leave your name and...
Okay. Okay, good evening. My name is Joseph Sykes. I live at Ten Oakwood in Prospect Heights. I commute downtown in my car. And the reason why I'm here is I had a couple of things to mention that I thought could help the community. The first thing was at Palatine Road, after the Milwaukee Avenue overpass at Saunders, there's a street light. The eastbound lanes have only a five-car capacity for any cars to turn left because there's a barricade and otherwise just the wall. And I think IDOT has not thought about reengineering that where there could be additional traffic and make the lane longer for left car turns so Palatine Road eastbound doesn't get backed up, especially during the morning rush hour. So that was the first thing, Saunders and Palatine, the eastbound lanes, the left turn lanes particularly. The second thing was on Elmhurst Road, just north of Palatine. There's a bike path that goes across the street. And there's just a sign there to tell people the bikes have the right-of-way. And unfortunately, the bikes don't generally get any kind of right-of-way on Elmhurst Road. Today, I witnessed a car, you know, cars going by and bicyclists waiting, and he's just waiting for all the cars to go. And tonight, on the way here, there was a senior citizen that walked halfway across the street and was waiting for the cars to go. So I was proposing that maybe we have some kind of a signal that would be forever green for the cars, but if someone was to touch it, within 15 seconds, the light could go red for 30 seconds to give ample time for students, children, people walking their dogs across the street. I think of the incident on Central Avenue in Mount Prospect where a little girl got hit in the Mount Prospect. People tried to reengineer the crosswalk. So since Elmhurst Road is particularly higher-speed road, I figured a traffic signal would be the best deterrent or safest thing for past people. That was the second thing. The third thing was yesterday, when I was on the walking path, the same one we're talking about along Elmhurst Road that goes over to Shawan Beck, there was a tree down at the bridge. It had blown over, and I notified Public Works, and they were very fast. And I just wanted to say thank you to Public Works because this tree had six huge limbs. The one came down, and they chopped it up. And basically, it's still fallen, but at least people and their dogs and whatever bicyclists can get by. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. Last thing I was gonna mention was, a few years back, I bought a hybrid alternative vehicle, and I happened to notice near the airport that you have a refueling station for these type of vehicles. And I saved $5,000 in one year on fuel. I thought that was substantial. And if you're interested, I can talk to anybody afterwards. I don't want to slow your agenda down. So, thank you.
Thank you. I go every day that same way with that turn on Palatine Road, so I agree with you. I don't know why that's like that. Unfortunately, it's not our jurisdiction, but we can ask and push IDOT to. Yeah, because it backs up all the way to the bridge.
Correct.
Yes, it's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just address one thing. The bike path, as much as I'd love to take credit for the tree, it was the Prospect Heights Park District that did that. So I'd like to take the credit, but it was the park district. Just to... You're welcome.
Okay, with that, we have no executive session. We have no executive session at this time.
Mayor?
Yes?
I want to add something. It's a non-agenda situation. Scott Britton gave me the idea. I was hoping I could add, but somehow that doesn't always happen, and I was hoping he would stay. But in parallel with what he said about the hate situation, in the Illinois Municipal League, the magazines that we get, I thought it was very nice that in parallel, they actually added a civility pledge. And part of the hate is because of some political divides, et cetera, et cetera. But they had proposed that all municipalities incorporate the civility pledge, and it simply goes like this. And there's different ways of doing it, having a plaque, having a signed something. I can send that to you later. But it says, "In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective." Really nice and simple. Thank you.
No, that's a good idea. I agree. That's simple but important.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We are adjourned.